Goodness and the Father, we thank you for this beautiful old day, we thank you for the blessings of life. For us today in this school, this community today, and the students of your nation. The light today will be pleasing in your eyes, and we ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Praise is due to flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I thank everyone for coming out tonight to our April fifteenth city council meeting. Uh, to start off with a roll call, Curtis is back there.
Yes, sir.
Our chief is with us again tonight. Ms. Wendy's here, Ms. Sue's here, Father's here. Today is Franklin's birthday, so I can keep that hooky on. I'm here, Ms. Virginia's here, Ms. Sherri's here, and also, Mr. Warren's birthday is today. Uh, I'm about there. Two people, happy birthday to both of them, and many more to come. And, uh... How much have been, two people happy birthday the same day.
Chris, where are you going to have RP twins?
Yeah, I did. So, with that being said, if y'all had a chance to look at the agenda, um, in a few minutes.
I moved that we approved the minutes for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah.
The agenda's hard, April fifteenth.
All right, let's get, we got a motion with a second, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same motion, clear. Uh, next up is the minutes for the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four town council meeting.
New approval of minutes for the March twenty-fifth town council meeting?
One second.
Again, we have a motion with a second, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same motion, clear. Next up is the minutes for the April first town council meeting.
New approval of minutes for April first town council meeting?
Again, we have a motion, add a second, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same motion, clear. Public particip- participation, I'll give it up a minute. Uh, if you wish to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a form, which is in the back, back here, and submit it to Ms. Wendy, our town clerk, for the record. We ask that you approach the podium, speak clearly, state your full name, address for the record, and comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. I mean, did we have anybody?
Haven't had anybody. I think he's gonna let me get a...
Okay. All right. With that being said, we will, uh, we will hold them till after we do our student of the month presentation, so we'll move forward to that. And with that being said, Ms. Sherri, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, we have three students tonight. Uh, our middle school student of the month for March is Ms. Destiny LaRue, and she was nominated by Jonathan Arizaric. Our high school student of the month were Stephen Michael and Madison Stewart. Um, did y'all come up at this time, please? In front of the podium or on?
In front of the podium. Hey Elijah.
Hi.
Don't worry, sir.
No. You wanna drop?
Good part.
Stephen.
You drove into somebody's house every day.
And Destiny?
I think that part's all right, so.
She wants it.
I see a little car running, step in the way, they're all around. When they go, when they go up, now it's a flat, she's looking at the up.
There you go, perfect.
Congratulations to you three.
Thank you.
Fantastic job, and we look forward to all that in the future too, sir. And, uh... If y'all wish to, you can, you can leave, I asked you to stay, but if you want to, go see all this festive event with us, you're welcome to stay. We'll just leave it at that, okay? So, uh, now, do we have any speakers? Wendy? Two?
Okay.
Hello, great brother.
How you doing?
All right, you doing okay?
Yes, sir, okay.
Everything looking good out there?
Well, I tell you what, what am I going to do there for a short while?
That could be.
We'll go through that. Uh, first up on the information items is the Walker Assessment Order and Ways for Park for the Board Meeting is Wednesday, April seventeenth. That will be at Old Creek at one P M. Everyone is welcome to come. Um, next up is the, uh, Community Moving Night, which is sponsored by the Town of Boston. Will be April the eighteenth at seven P M. That is at the Gymnasium. This is for sure. So, you can come out, it's free. Uh, deadline for the Town of Boston Scholarship Education is Friday, April the nineteenth. Do we have?
Yeah, I dropped my...
Take a look, oh, there we go, you got a map. Uh, the next Code Enforcement Board Meeting is Wednesday, April the twenty-fourth at five P M. That will be here. And there is a meet and greet here from the handy orders. Uh, that is the twenty-fifth at six P M.
Here.
Here. They're using the bill. Anytime they have something here, they have that one. So, uh, that will be that. Uh, Red at the mighty Food Bank and Local Food Drive is Friday, April the twenty-sixth at nine thirty A M. At James Dock Park. Read that word, Elijah, you in charge of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Our next town council meeting will be Monday, May the sixth at six P M. And with all the meat, we have our Teacher Appreciation Week is from May the sixth to May the tenth. Have you made a final announcement on that?
Yes.
Okay. And last but not least, the Beautiful Bronson Day Number Six is Saturday, May the eighteenth at ten A M. That will be...
Cemetery.
At the cemetery. At the Junior Cemetery.
Yep, we're gonna clean some graves.
Okay.
And I've gotten lots of kids from the high school.
You staying?
I don't want to go back.
We know teacher may or may not.
I don't want to go back there. You got a pressure washer?
No, we're never pressure washing.
Well, how you doing?
Scrubbing and lightly rinse them.
Pressure washing will probably damage them.
Yeah, pressure washing will hurt them.
It was down before.
Leaving the...
It was down before.
Need to tell them.
I'm not really taking the risk of messing them up.
Did you grease them to the Junior Cemetery? Okay, oh, yeah, that's like a hundred years. Yeah, but grease with water and swimming water.
Okay, we, we got that all taken care of then?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna back up and do?
Yes, I'll take a backup and do that. All right, we'll start off with the first one on the top, I have the deer farm, you know, Christian.
Hey Attorney Mormon, Council Shirley, can you give your mics? We're getting some feedback.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My neighbor told me you guys are trying to ban chickens. And one other thing, real quick, too. The water, teach going higher and higher. I have gardens. And they are charging me sewage for every bit of water I use. I need an irrigation meter put in. So I quit getting charged, oh, it did not pay five thousand this last one.
Yes, sir, we did, we did have a rate increase on sewer.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Apes.
No, they raised the water two or three times last year.
They raised it once or twice.
At this point, I'm not gonna be able to afford paid for water.
Well, sir, I have the same situation that you have, and I put in, I have, I have oil for that purpose, for animals and for garden and stuff like that.
You have the money for the well.
Ah, sir, I, I, I can't. We're not in the business here, and I, and I'm not being detrimental, or I'm not being negative towards your case, your situation, but we have a cost factor that's involved in providing services to the community, and that is, that is the cost, the big cost, that's, I mean, we are not, we don't just pick this number out of the clear blue sky.
No, I understand.
For, we have, we have us, we, see what's in there?
Water, water association dictates to us what we have to charge.
You want to get an irrigation meter put in?
Uh, sir.
I can go directly off of that from my garden.
Curtis, you wanna address that, what the cost would be in front of that?
Well, with me, first of all, you want, you want to sit down, yes. First, for residential meters, we don't put in an irrigation meter. I mean, he can have a separate meter, um, but it's gonna be the same. It's gonna be totally gallons used. And if he's on sewer, which he's probably already on sewer, whatever the water rate is, or is the gallons used, you charge for sewer. There's no dividing it up, so that you only charge for water.
The bottom line is, I'm in the city, I can't afford paid for water. So I go without water at someone else.
Uh, sir, um, my, I do not have an answer.
There is no answer.
There are organizations out there that can help you with utility bills?
If you make over fourteen thousand a year, they don't help you.
Um, I have a plethora of plants. And I do not water my plants with the city water. Um, I catch water for my plants. And maybe something that you have to look into. And there, there is a good, very good, successful way to do it. Um, there's places around here that can get rid of containers that you can use. You just have to ask the land. Um, I can tell you a place that gets rid of some, but then you just have to put a spigot at the bottom of it. But, I mean, you, where there's a will, there's a way to do both. You just may have to try to catch some rain or whatever.
But, you know, the bottom line is, I just, you know, the, the water here is terrible.
The water here is great.
So we got the best water in the whole city.
It smells bad.
This water has to smell bad.
I disagree on that.
Well, I disagree with you on that, because I got, I got...
Now, that all does, that all actually determines what kind of pipes you have in your house. And there's a lot of other things that go into factor with the water versus, you may not get the same water that I get, even though we're given the same water. If you have older pipes in your house, and if they're not cleaned off, cleaned out, then you may have some rust in your water, some, some not good stuff, maybe even some bacteria. But, but I can tell you, my, our water at my house is great.
Sir, I can tell you this from state testing that we do here. We have the ability to sell this water to the general public right now, without doing a thing to it, straight out of the ground. That's how good it is. The state officer that tested this years ago for us, and they do it on a regular basis, told me this is one of the few municipalities in the whole state of Florida that that can be done. There is no other place than Leaning County.
You get the water from a well?
Yes, sir.
So what's the big tanks and all that over here? Where's all the sewage go?
The sewage goes into that recycling center over there. That tank that you see in front by the schools there? That's just storage.
That's where...
It's just a big tank freshener.
No, I'm saying, is your recycling?
Yes, sir.
That's why it smells bad.
No, we're not recycling, we're not recycling, we're not an aquifer.
Yeah, we don't recycle water.
We treat, we treat...
You can't legally do that.
No, we treat our sewer just like anybody else.
Ever thought all that is done, all that is man-made and under control by federal and state regulations?
Any water that you recycle, you have to have it one somewhere that is not gonna be used for human consumption.
Legally, that water, do you see in that sprinkler system out there? By all regulations, you could drink it.
Yeah, we got a great one.
That's how clean it is, when it's, when it's processed and reset back up.
Where's the what at? I see the recycling.
We don't have a well, it's the aquifer.
The two, we have two, two pumps right now that we use. And one is on each side of that copper tube.
And you can, and just to let you know, uh, Home Depot sells a test kit, you're allowed to get tested once a month. Yeah, send, send in a sample and see what's in there. Because I sent one of my water, and it came back good. Yep, so.
So chickens, we're not banning chickens.
No.
Address the, have them in a coop and stuff like that, and try, maybe a bit darker.
You can't turn them loose and just let them run for it.
No, my neighbor...
You gotta have them in a feed.
Yeah, you could help them in storage, try to keep chickens, and they got out. You got lots of reason for it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I want to understand, so if, if Bill went up because of his soul?
If Bill went up because of consumption?
Because, see, I just started a new garden. I think I left a real message, and I'm not worried about mine, mine went from twenty-five to ninety-two. And I knew it went that way, because I was running out on that lawn.
You run it all out, it just don't happen?
Same, same situation that with them.
Exactly.
His is more because he's on sewer.
What you, what you just witnessed is what I could, what I classify as a sticker shock, okay? He did, he, he ordered his garden, and when he got his bill back...
See, I do mine, I can do that.
And that's what you've seen here.
Yeah, I got it.
And I cannot make adjustments for that. All right, let me move on to the next element, because I know he wants to get up here. Mr. Josh, come forward, it's Mr. John Chozen.
Yeah.
Martella?
Yes. So, yeah, I'm having an issue with my neighbor sitting about with the chickens.
Yes, sir.
Basically, I have a bunch of chickens that are running in my yard. Um, and I'd like to point out that my neighbor has no proof that my chickens were on his property. He sent photos to Sue a few weeks ago, uh, when our rooster was on my right wing. Since then, I got rid of the rooster, so we've got an issue, I have a few more chickens. And basically, uh, one total was a chicken in my yard. So, there was no proof that these chickens in mine were on his property, there's no proof. So, and his biggest issue, I guess, is with, uh, leaves in the yard. So basically, there's no proof that any of my chickens transported, kicked, or dragged leaves or debris come onto his property. We did not produce any evidence, no photos, no video. Also, how are chickens supposed to be dragging leaves into a yard? If they were never in the yard. So he's all about the leaves issue, not a chicken issue. Um, and just for the record, I have history with this neighbor. Um, he had to hire and pay a tree trimming company a couple of years ago. Uh, were overhanging limbs over the property line. I wasn't great, and we knew it, so he had to pay. There's probably issues in the chickens as an excuse to get back to me. And it's nothing to do with the chickens, it's just the, the leaves, in my opinion. My neighbor also shoots squirrels. He shoots squirrels for fun, and I found a dead squirrel a couple of weeks ago on my property. So that is something else I was addressing. So I'm just pointing all this out to you because, um, since I moved here two and a half years ago, I just wanted the country life, and I figured you can't have chickens out running about, and they eat bugs, insects, that's a good thing. Uh, so my proposal was that he could put a panel against his metal property fence, so that no type of debris or leaves could go through. It's about six feet high. Uh, we won't be able to see each other, which is another good thing. It will increase privacy on both sides. Um, so I said six feet high, and to make, so I, to me, this makes perfect sense, and it's not too expensive to get panel. As opposed to just getting like a fence, plus like a, a hoop, a rangle, or just getting a natural fence like on my side, but if he puts a panel, it's expensive. And would you guys be able to tell me, um, what prompted this amendment to, um, the ordinance? And what exactly, whether there are many people that are complaining about this, or it's to my neighbor and a few others?
Chickens, all, there's chickens all over this town running everywhere.
Like outside the property, sir?
Yes. At the road down Main Street.
On Main Street.
Where it was on the Main Street.
That's the only place, like, on Main Street, David Street.
Big Bridge. The Amish. There's some...
We were trying to address this issue as, we, first of all, we have a resolution, is that coming in now too?
Right.
And she will, Sue will be reading that here in just a few minutes, if you want to stay for that.
I'll say.
Uh, but this resolution is going to address that situation to where we can at least have something where we can approach people that have chickens that have turned them loose. Uh, the problem we have here is we have people that have chickens, and they get loose, and then they say, oh, they're not mine, you know, they, I don't own it. And we've had that on several occasions, we've had, we have chickens right here at City Hall. Uh, we, in fact, we had an ex-city councilman that had chickens that were running around here, so. That's a, that's another story in itself, okay? Uh, this is, this is, like you say, country life. We try to be, keep the simple as we possibly can. Uh, but we also have to acknowledge that the other people have their lives too, and we want to keep it as best possible. So, we're not banning chickens, yes, you can keep chickens, but you have to keep them confined, just like you would your dog, or your cat, whatever else, that's another story in itself.
So I talked as well, they went to the yard with the chickens, but in this case, like, no chicken was on his property. People that you transport and stuff, it's not, that's my only...
We have a lady that calls us every day about roosters growing in the front door. I think, didn't I correct you?
It's often, yes.
Yes, sir. I mean, this is what we did, sir.
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, my side defense is, um, six feet, and my front, I believe, legally has to be four, so I can increase it to six. So it's six feet around.
Six.
Four, five, and six.
But I can tell you this, that if a chicken wants to go to six foot ten, no, blackfoot, maybe. Cat, dogs, they also do something.
Yep.
But, have you got anything else, Forrest?
No, um, at this point, again, yeah, actually, I just discovered a couple of days ago, you have the blow horn. So every time my chickens are getting a little too close to the property line, they get startled.
Yes, sir.
So it's just getting to a point where there's multiple people with this neighbor, so I just want to put it to bed.
I understand, sir.
Up to that conclusion.
There, there is no answer for the problem. I can tell you that.
Okay.
That's all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Sue?
All right, so... Okay, first up is, um, first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two, regulating weight of commercial vehicles operating on residential streets. I'll have him read the title of the ordinance for the record. Um, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-two, ordinance to regulate, limit, and restrict the weight of commercial vehicles operating on residential streets, containing definitions, specifications, exceptions, enforcement provisions, and effective date. So we talked about this last week because of the erosion of the railroad on Standard Street. Um, you guys asked me to go and check into what some different municipalities were doing. Um, interestingly enough, the city of Newbury does not have an ordinance regulating the weight of commercial vehicles, that must be my H O A. Um, however, the city of Chief, Flint, the city of Williston, and the town of English all have an ordinance, they're in your packet, they're there, is in order. All of them restrict weight to ten thousand pounds. And then they all give some sort of exemption, so far as we exempt garbage trucks, residential deliveries and pickups, construction projects, commercial or industrial businesses, municipal vehicles, and authorized emergency vehicles. And then, um, I love the article that Vice Mayor Phillips gave me, there's an article there from, um, Science Daily that identifies the top couple reasons why sewer lines fail. One is the concrete's not strong enough, and the second is they can't handle the weight of trucks that drive over them, so. You could potentially have issues not with just the pavement, but our sewer lines, so.
Agricultural stuff needs to be added in there too.
Agricultural?
Yep.
So...
Somebody sit a little bit of hay sitting on their truck.
Okay.
Needs to be...
Under exemptions, okay.
Or tractor and things like that.
So...
A tractor that's being used for purposes, I mean, not just cruising down the street.
We did not being covered up for...
It should be if it's not weighing over ten thousand pounds.
I know, whatever, ten thousand pounds, my truck weighs eight thousand pounds.
It would be, I'm just saying that we have not been covered under...
So it'll be called...
We have what we discussed.
You have an exemption, for example, if somebody's getting delivered a sofa or...
Delivery.
Because that's a delivery. Yeah, I think anything's under whatever, but... So you want to go like agricultural, um...
But if you optimize the situation for that, it can't be something that's every day, like, you know.
Yeah, that's...
I'm just gonna break it down.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to park your tractor in your, on pitch to your truck there all the time, because that still creates the same problem.
Can you go through your examples, so we have people that would be driving a tractor or something to their...
He said, like, for his, it would be with the tractor attached to it, but it's not, that's not gonna be something that he's doing every night, like, these trucks are there all the time.
Right.
Well, I can see here, so, here's the problem. My, because it says in section three, Shelby unlocked frame person stopper parked commercial vehicle with a gross vehicle weighing 10,000 pounds or more on any street located or within the residential zone district four on any property. So, I booked my tractor every single day of the week, and I'm sitting in my yard with it. Still breaking the four months.
And I, and I've seen, so when I looked, the best one that I found was actually two of them. But, um, when I looked, I did, I don't remember which city it was, but one of them said, let me say it, um, in Tampa, one of them said, instead of saying commercial trucks, it said for hired trucks. And that changed who you were talking about, because that would exempt you, but I, I think it's the language. Because what you're saying is right, but...
Yeah, they don't, none of these three have anything like that, but doesn't mean you can't put it in there.
I don't know, Sam, I mean, we don't have a lot of, we're gonna be hooked up, hooked up with you, so I can have pay on it.
Right, I understand Thomas's concern here, the fact that he knows that if, if him sitting behind that desk right there, and then he would be breaking the rules, that's a no doubt. I, I understand that, he never gonna do that.
Right.
So, but, he also has jobs that he has to do. And I'm just, I would be just as giving him this difficult, I have a truck, I have a trailer, and I have a tractor. Okay, if I move it out of my yard, then I have... Of course...
If, 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 if I lived on a city, city street.
Right.
Yeah, on your property, because it's located within a residential zoning. You know, of course, that's how it reads on section three, on any property located within a residential zoning district.
So, the definition...
It's just the language is what, needs to be tweaked a little bit somehow.
It's more.
Definition.
I think you planned a roll call. No, so we don't want that, because it says a company pays to transport goods from one location to another. Aren't you talking about these guys? You know exactly what that is, a company that pays to transport goods?
But that's what you want to put the order in.
That's if somebody could be a box truck.
Right.
It's still, it's still being pressured.
I'm saying you don't want to exempt that, because...
No, 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 but if you use that for the ordinance, then you're not exempting him. I mean, then you, then you are exempting him, because you're not...
The law's on you.
Well, the legal truck... The neighbor in your truck in a ways would jump for hire, so.
You have to be careful with that too, because you've got, you've got truck drivers that are violent.
Not for hire.
Not for hire.
That are personal.
That did personal things.
During, what, we got any thoughts? I need yourself.
I'm not even in that, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, one of the provisions in the ordinance says, this article should not apply to following types of vehicles, A, any vehicle which is not a commercial motor vehicle, defined in the best so and so. If we're talking about a tractor on somebody's farm or somebody's agricultural property, I'm not sure that that is a, is a commercial vehicle. We did that definition, but I have it in front of me, but I can check, but if they already be exempted, kind of, is your calling?
No, they're going to be considered as, I would think.
Yeah, but mine's registered as a, I have commercial insurance policy.
Yeah, he, he does, he promises it.
All right, then you may need an agricultural exemption. It's, it's interesting, because there is agriculture, you all need to mind ordinance, so we looked at the samples, and I did not see agricultural exemption. Maybe they're just innovative, or it may be that that particular statue encovers it. But I would for sure, is within that statute immediately, and if it doesn't cover it, then if that's which, we'll look into how to find if they add it or not, an agricultural exemption.
Commercial vehicle is, is described as any self-rental or towed vehicle used on public highways and commerce to transport passengers or cargo. Such vehicle has a gross vehicle weight rating of ten thousand pounds or more, is designed to transport only fifteen passengers, including driver, or is used in the transportation of materials found to be hazardous for the purposes of hazardous material transportation act. A vehicle that transports.
So, that doesn't include a farm?
I mean, we could just make, like, number eight, agricultural equipment used for farming?
Well, what that is, is when you cross up, for instance, Tyler has a piece of equipment that he uses for farming, but he also uses it for commercial. I, I could do the same thing with mine, because it's for him.
How much is the weight of?
Tractor, probably seven, eight thousand pounds.
But again.
Truck and trailer.
It doesn't weigh more than ten thousand. Right, but to get it there, you're just transporting for point eight or point eight, you're not going to park your tractor there with more than two thousand pounds on that strip.
Like, I park in my yard. That's the only, the only thing I was concerned is it's saying park on any property located within a residential zoning district. Because if I get home at ten o'clock at night, I don't feel like I'm hooking everything. And sitting there, all it takes is for one sour person to say, oh, he's breaking the ordinance he just passed, and.
Another reaggressing combination vehicles, yeah. That's not specified.
So, it, it's just the language that we're looking for, to, it's not the.
If it causes an issue, such as we're discussing now, then, then, then the issue exists, whatever the ultimate answer is, and if we can't figure it out every time, by putting a few steps into the draft ordinance, then that's probably the thing to do. I mean, if it's agreed that you don't want these agricultural obstructions to occur, to raise issue, it just needs to have an agricultural way.
I don't know what the best way to word it would be, I would say. Let's see, how do you, how do you produce destructions? And you wish current obstruction activity within the residential district.
Agricultural equipment. Oh, well, yeah, yeah. Agricultural.
Yeah, I can move up with it, I can have a meeting with these, but I can come up with the, the provisional ideas, you're not going to cover it. That's the thing to do, why argue about it?
Yeah, see, I would say, I'd rather throw it in there and be safe than, it's all right.
That's right, exactly.
And like I say, I understand Tyler's, if he wants to, he's wanting to make sure he.
Like me?
Go on something, then, then he first, from the first person.
Yeah, I'll break it tonight when I go home.
Please don't.
Could the town's issue permit, if somebody break a restriction, they just come in and ask for a permit, the town give them a permit? And that way, if anybody's parking without a town permit, it can be enforced.
I, I wouldn't want to go down that road. I think that, that's exactly what we've got this problem with, this McKinsey, because we're trying to scope something for, you know, one person.
Mr. McKinney did fine.
I would just, yeah, but it's great, like you said.
She was fine following in.
You guys, you guys good with that?
Yeah, that's fine. I would, I would, I would have heard one thing, the best way to word it, I guess, I would be up.
If we get down the road, we cross that path, and it comes in again with you.
Yeah, and, not saying that anybody's ever going to complain about it, but there might be the one person, one day, somebody gets that.
You just drag it up right there. You said, if nobody else is going to complain about it, yeah, so we just, we just borrow it.
Probably in Standard and Holmes, in those areas.
And so, because Alex Locke lives down, off of there too, and he's hooked to a cow trailer sometimes too, so it's quick to claim about.
Yeah, I mean, you got the same situation right there with, uh. Oh, we're out there by the. Tyler, what's his name? We're out there by, this, we got the two of you problems with, and then they got there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dollar or something, yeah, they got the.
With the, the mobile home.
They got that, they grow some twenty-five or thirty thousand pounds with that rig, they come in and out. They'll have, they'll have fifteen thousand pounds of rocks on them.
Oh, the mobile home, yeah, yeah.
And that tractor on the back of it at the same time, of course, again, they pull off on the right, and that is not agricultural, that's a, that's a, that is a commercial rig out there. You're going to open up several situations that could, could be a challenge for this type of violence here. If you had, that somebody took the place.
Well, I can see.
And one thing I do want to add here is we do want to do that.
I can see somebody complaining, because they're going to have to pay to park somewhere, and they are going to have to drive how many miles to do it. I get it. But the amount of money that we're going to spend on these pipes.
Oh, no, exactly, we definitely, we definitely have to do it. I mean, the way the roads are crumbling and all that stuff, from eighty thousand pounds is.
Yes, unless they want to front, they want to go down. Yeah, now, they could, they could go ahead and.
They want to front the money for that, okay.
So, how, how deep down are those pipes, that they are being affected by, by your truck?
That's in my, that's in my turnip.
Sewer pipe or.
On that thing. He thinks that was just a bad asshole, slap.
Uh, well, they deep, they, they probably, some of them, you know, the manholes, some of them are six feet deep, six, six and a half, seven feet deep. But the problem is the latos, you know, when people, you know, run from a home to the manhole.
Got you.
That's what, like, right here with, that's why I have the Cameron eyes built right here on this little side street. Going to his, they go over so much right there, and you got a swell in the pipe, they had to redo all of that stuff, because it just sits in the bottom of the pipe, it doesn't, can't go over there.
It creates a belly in the pipe and.
And the manhole on that street, there's a, they said, the person said they can sit there and watch it, the road goes up, and the manhole goes up, and now the trucks go over it.
No way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got a phone call about that.
So, so, that one, you know, it's just. So, these ordinance would not be for every street, but certain streets, residential.
Residential street, yeah. So, not like twenty-four, twenty-seven, Court, Main, nothing state or.
Well, like Main Street?
No, that's county.
It would be.
Be like Pine Street, it'd be.
Yeah, the streets are different.
Stand, the Standard, Davis Street, uh, Miller Street, stuff like that.
The, the one in the back, basically where trucks should not be going at most, they have a, a certain purpose.
Alright, so we're going to change the verdict on that, and come back to it for the next meeting. Correct?
Do you, do you want to do another first reading at the next meeting, or do you want to do a second reading?
That's a warm question.
Can we accept it with the proposed changes for our first reading tonight, or do we need to do that next meeting?
You, you don't have the changes specifically articulated, so it has to come back for kind of the first reading.
Okay.
I think that would be a good thing to do.
So, we don't need to vote tonight then, right?
Exactly, don't vote tonight.
And those business impact statements that we have to do are in the, also, just after the ordinance. Okay, secondment is a first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero three. Again, I'll read the title into the record. In ordinance to further amend and supplement ordinance number twenty-two dash zero three to amend and supplement chapter fourteen, section fifteen dash two. Activities or conditions deemed nuisances of the Bronson Code of Ordinances to further define nuisance as related to the keeping of animals and setting an effective date, so as to require confined maintenance of poultry, and so as to further define livestock to include animals of a pork, pork kind, nature? Pork kind, can I say that word? Regardless of kind, including an effective date. Okay, so I gave you, obviously, in your packet, we've got the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, the business impact statement, and then you've got the original ordinance twenty-two dash zero three from past, past two years ago. So, again, just to kind of fill in, right, and the reason why we're looking at making code for these changes. The first one was a result of a code enforcement violation on Marshburn, where we had a neighbor complaining, one another neighbor who had a, I think the word was Julian pig, from what I'm stating. Which weighed like seventy pounds. Mike and I, our building official and I, both interpreted the original ordinance twenty-two dash zero three to say that nobody could have this kind of livestock on less than an acre, and they have a third of an acre. When it went to the code enforcement board, the code enforcement board ruled Julian pig was a pet, due to its relatively small size. So, we're adding this on this pork kind, pork kind nature, to define basically any pig is not a pet, it's a, it would be included.
Or seen.
Or seen, thank you. So, that's the first one. The second one is because of what Mr. Martello was going through on Davis Street. So, obviously, we've got two neighbors who have had ongoing disputes for several years now, but the one right now is because his neighbor complained that the chickens. It's been multiple complaints over the last roughly six weeks, but originally, it was that the rooster and the chickens were going onto his property. Mr. Martello has since made it so that the chickens and the rooster could not get onto his property, but now it's really about the fact that the chickens and the rooster are kicking leaves from Mr. Martello's property to Mr. Watson's property.
How dare they?
So, the question is whether or not you guys want to, because again, I get, I get chicken calls every, feels like every day. Whether or not we want to make it so that chickens have to be in a chicken coop, as opposed to right now, we're saying that they just strictly have to be on one's property, which they are right now on Mr. Martello's property. So, that's the, in the ordinance. That's what these two amendments are coming from, is basically code enforcement complaints.
There you go, Cass.
Isn't the wind blowing leaves on his property? So, did the, well, they're having, where is next?
Did the code enforcement make a decision on the pig?
Yes, they decided that there was no violation, because the pig was a pet. They asked the, um, they asked the owner of the pig to move the pig to the other side of the property, that the one not next to the person who was complaining, which she agreed to do just out of the kindness of her heart, not because the board made her. But she did that, and then, now we've got other issues, because now they've complained about the original complaint, and so that's the other, the other, but anyway, she did move the pig, but not because the board made her, just.
And so, is that going to come back to the code enforcement?
For something totally unrelated.
Okay.
Now we have issues with shit.
Had not heard of it.
Not heard, no, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want, now that we've done.
This is completely close, six seventy-five, Marshburn is completely.
But if we read, if we update this ordinance like this, and then the people make another complaint.
They could potentially make another complaint, yes. It's, I'm just throwing it out there, that's, I mean, you don't have to do these things, these are just my.
A coop, I like the, them having to be in a coop. I mean, having, having a chicken run is okay, where they can go out during the day, whatever, but I think having it in a coop is, um.
Are you going to define a coop? Are you going to define?
Yeah.
What do you mean, like, somebody could just make it from, like, by hand?
Or you're going to, let me put twenty chickens in a coop that's ten by five, or you're going to, that's where.
That'd be a, that'd be a health department, I'd like to know.
You have to, with your chickens in there?
Yeah, if you have to find a, then that'd be a health department, or a, a sure value animal.
Sorry, wait.
But I think the coop is going to help, is would maybe.
So, are the chickens getting off the property, or they're not getting off the property?
It is they are no longer getting off of the property, but we still have issues on Main Street, we still got issues other places.
That's what I'm saying, I think, having, having, where they say, okay, they have to be in a coop, then that might limit somebody, okay, so, so, where they get chickens or anything, okay, well, I need to go, I got to go with coop, and instead of just getting chickens and then dumping them out of the yard.
Just say enclosure.
And say if, yeah, say if they go.
Or they think, you could say something just as simple as that you cannot have free roaming.
Outside of the property, you won't free roaming?
Free roaming out of the property.
Well, those, what's this now?
Yeah, it says, it says outside the property now, free roaming. Says, supposed to be confined to the neighborhood.
I don't know, it's just a, it was just a try to, I don't know, we have so many issues with chickens.
Outside of the property is a huge question, but I think I have so many other things better to do than tell somebody what to put on the property.
My thing is, now, if the chicken, well, no offense to Joe, but Joe's chicken gets out next week, and they, your neighbor calls us, what, what are we doing?
Well, then it's a violation, because it's outside the property.
But then what do we do? You catch the chickens, and then what do you do once we catch the chickens?
You ain't catching certain chickens.
Oh, I know that.
So, we say, we say they have to be constricted to, confined to a coop, I mean, they can have a run, but.
But then what do you do if they don't? We don't have a way to enforce, you can't pick up the chickens.
Well, we've had some.
Yeah, but here, but there's a difference between those chickens and his chickens.
Well, yeah, because the chickens on Main Street are literally roaming the streets.
Yeah, and it's like, we've had, we've had situations on Main Street where somebody has hit a chicken, and a part of their vehicle was messed up because they hit the chicken. So, that's an issue right there, but I just.
That's for you going to make a chicken.
That's what I don't, yeah, the chicken is supposed to cross the road, what happens if it don't?
Well, my, and here's the big, this is my thing, the big difference between Main Street chickens and our chickens over there, because Joe's also my neighbor. He said, those chickens nobody plugges.
Yeah.
His chickens are his chickens, so what do we do in that time span? So, let's say we pick up Joe's chicken. I mean, you can bring him out, a lot of pet chickens are like cats, but what are you going to do with them?
But the one rooster that was the potential issue, like the dominant alpha male, I already have, so now I have hens, much smaller. And they come out in the morning, and then when the sun sets, they go to sleep. I mean, I have like a little thing in the back, and they go there, but throughout the day, they're roaming around.
It don't matter, because these are questions that are going to get brought up.
But I've never seen them on the other side, because I have a neighbor too. Who has chickens, she's okay with it in the front, I've never seen him in the front, I've never seen Mr. Watson in his yard, so.
And we just know. Bring up something that is totally, just totally out there for that fee. If you do, if you set a presence on this here, wants to keep that person walking in that door, the next time you say, okay, you did this with chickens, I don't want that dog turning around in that backyard, I want that, that dog to be.
And that's, I agree with you, because the issue with the, the issue with the, the chickens are pushing dirt onto his property, is unfounded, the city should not have anything to do with it, because it's, what am I, you going to do with my two-year-old, throw the rock on your, on your property, or my two-year-old kick some dirt over there?
It's a civil issue, right?
It's civil.
Namely, the street. Yeah, you have to, you do need to figure out the enforcement of somebody not keeping their animals in. You do need to figure out the enforcement of somebody not keeping their animals inside of their thing.
You know, we've had, we've had this, this to happen here before where we had a neighbor with a, and I will quote the word that is used at night, a yacking dog. That dog is just that, 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 all the time, you know what I'm saying? Yes, it can be a dog. What do you do about it?
But you know there's cities that have ordinances because of that? For a dog, for a marking dog?
The reason why, we didn't enforce it. We didn't have anything to enforce.
Yeah, and that's my, that's why I bring that up, is because there's nothing, I mean, I agree with the yacky dogs. Like there's, you live in the country, like somebody has an acre. I hear cows and roosters and dogs all over my, I hear cat kids, I hear kids, peacocks, yes, like.
Yeah, what, only thing, yeah, this is something that you can do. If you have a peacock putting out there.
My mother has a peacock.
First of all, if there's somebody dying over there.
You can hear them almost a mile away, too.
Yes. Again, my son's neighbor's had one over there. They fly on top of his house, and they got the kids scared to death. Well, they get, anyhow, it's nice. I'm just telling you, when you open up these can of worms in this situation, you'll be able to hold on to them.
Can you put a collar on your chickens so we pick them up from your doors? Handle the chickens?
I'm an ankle manager.
So the chickens on Main Street don't belong in the yard? They'll be crazy. Well, you pick them up and put them in something, and somebody will be looking, we're trying, no, they.
You can't pick them up.
Oh, yeah, those, those are all.
Then I call all the chickens, I can get them trapped.
Yeah, those are, yeah, I got, I got.
But they're, the rest of them are smart now. Rest of them know that the trap might go up there.
I don't understand how a cat can walk. They chose the chickens.
I mean, because they're scared of the chickens.
You've got way more cats than you got chickens.
Listen, I came from the neighborhood.
Yo, this is a, this is the country. Come on, I mean, you go, pretty soon, what are you gonna ask, what you gonna do about squirrels going in the yard?
We can judge them for the issue.
You gotta structure something that, because you can't control.
Nature.
Right, I mean, squirrel's gonna be an issue. Rat's gonna be an issue. I mean, it's gonna, that, the town doesn't have the means to control that. And what you have is, you know, is neighbors going at each other, but they using the town to fight their battles.
Exactly.
Yeah, and see, and I agree with Curtis, is their issue, it's.
The ones on Main Street are.
The ones are, the ones on Main Street are just.
And there is, there is some progress being made on that, okay? Uh, I mean, I think they've got a portion of the dog.
I think they're still like.
I don't know, that's the thing with the, the chicken, they say, they don't belong to you. Chickens are not gonna go roost where they're not, if it's not at home.
They always come back home.
Well, and he asked me, he said, can I, can I just shoot? And I said, I cannot give you that. But his chickens, he can kill, he can either kill or eat his chickens. And, uh, but now. We put a bounty on, and I promise you, they'll leave you here. So that's an old issue. We got chickens up here.
There's not four days a week, there are four days at my other appointment that I tell people, people will start talking about chickens, I'm like, there's free chickens on Main Street, you can catch them. So I send people down there all the time to try to catch them.
Alright.
He should have a judge.
I have no objection to this.
And that's when you can judge them, be afraid of them.
It was just a thought, I mean, just to let you know, the person, Mr. Martello's neighbor actually went to Commissioner John Meeks' office, so this person.
Good, just stay warm.
So I was like, I'll try and do something.
I've had nine decades.
To the county?
Yes. He has called me, Joe's neighbor, he's called me five times in the last six weeks about this.
You've not called me?
Called me twice today, and I had nine decades to tell him.
And when they can't get them, he calls me.
I mean, it just, it will not go away.
But what you supposed to do, right? You're supposed to get in your car and go catch his chickens out of his yard?
Right.
Because really, I mean, the only thing you can tell him is that, that's private property, that's his own property. As long as the chickens are on his property, there is nothing to do. So he can call a hundred times a day, the chickens on his property, them his chickens, when he pay taxes, that, what is we supposed to do with it?
I put cameras just to prove that my chickens are not going.
Joe's got cameras.
That my chicken are not going.
Get bruised. Because it's.
And he's not happy with the fact.
And I'll be on my buying new chickens, and every day I'll be throwing new chickens and then be like, enough of my chickens, just my chickens.
So the two would be, there shall be added to section two, there on this end, the term large livestock shall include all animals not the pork kind nature irrespective of size, weight, or popular designation. So this is just to deal with pigs.
I still like, it's like a.
Unless you wanna just put something of all size in general, anything over a hundred pounds, anything.
Well, what did we do about the kids that had all, were showing?
That we gave an exemption, we gave an exemption for that. What, what is it? Section five does an exemption for that.
What exemption a person for acres?
One acre.
Tell them to buy more land, there you go. Make them, and they call you up? Tell them to buy more land. That's all they can.
Maybe you can, wait, it is, I, like I said, which.
As long as they consign, the way it is, as long as they confine to your property, not.
Nobody mentioned this to this man that he can actually build a fence?
I wouldn't, we're on, we're on a present right now. I wouldn't say that that would be, that her pig would be classified as a large livestock. I don't want anybody else to bring a full grown pig into their house for four hours, five hours a day.
I haven't seen this.
I was saying, say.
Well, there's something that are pets.
I, I was in the farming school, I business for twenty years, young, twenty years. And, and I promise you, some of the things that I have seen at people's properties, for instance, I have a neighbor, I have a bull on my property right now that a lady has an acre and a half piece of property. And there is more grass growing on this bed than there is in her yard right now. And the reason why is because she has five horses, she had three cows, two hogs, and about five or six dogs, all kinds of cats and chickens and ducks and all kinds of stuff. She left the city and was gonna be a country girl. And she did, an acre and a half, it doesn't work, it does not add up. The bull finally got tired of starving, so he comes up to Robin's house. Well, I got grass over there. And he has been there ever since, about two years. She won't come again?
So they won't back?
So, I mean, we could have a barbecue? Or, or I don't, I don't know, you know? I mean, I keep talking, man, you gotta come get the bull.
Is he a good looking bull?
They can't.
I don't get it.
Can I go down, actually, to school?
Exactly, there we go. But those are, those are some of the things that you deal with, and, you know, it's just like I told the lady sitting right here, probably thirty years ago. She was from Broward County, she had just moved to Bronson. And she had bought her a place over here in Billy Heights. And, and I was trying to tell you how this came about. She got fed up with the fact that the dog's neighbor's, neighbor's dog, she may have it, was turning her garbage over. And at that point in time, we couldn't even think about having a animal control person. I mean, Bronson just did not even think about, I mean, that was not even in the works. So out of the ultimate wisdom of mine, and I shouldn't have done this, okay? I pulled a dollar out of my pocket, and I put it up on the table, and I said, ma'am, you take this dollar, and you go down there and beat some hardware, that tells you how long ago that was. Hardware stores down in Bronson. And they got them twenty-two shorts down in there, ninety-five cent. And if you don't have a gun, how long do you want it, you kill that deer. And in a public meeting, she called me, I'm not gonna say it, but it was not nice, but, uh, because that's, that's just the way she felt, I mean, they, it's somebody else's problem, it's not theirs. Okay? And that's the problem with the world today, is people don't take care of their home property and mind their own business. And the biggest problem, we trying to handle problems through paperwork when we have no way of enforcing that. And it's just gonna keep creating more problems because there's nothing really without code enforcement, without, you know, the sheriff's department or the city having a police department. You can't, the sheriff is not gonna back the town ordinance because it's not staying long.
Well, I can tell you, even if you have a police department or a animal control officer, that if, I'm gonna use you, Joe, Joe's chickens get into Terry's yard, they're gonna say, I can move them, but it's a single, there's nothing you can do.
But with code enforcement, you have, they can, they can write citations. You know, they can start writing citations, writing.
There's nothing you can do, even when you write citations and people don't pay it, there's nothing you can do.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you start writing citations, you can.
You can attach it to them, you can leave them.
Right, you have, you have a means of doing, but right now, we just sending letters.
Well, no, we.
I mean, I'm just saying, but it, what, the time that it takes for you to go and go after someone to get them in compliance, you know, it's.
I don't think it sound like it's, it, nothing's happening, I mean.
Yeah, the thing is, I have, what I'm saying, the process, you're getting more and more of it.
Oh, well, yeah, this is like, you're gonna get something done, of course. But I mean, the board said that Jason Nicholson had to either make that front fence comply, or he was gonna be fined, thirty days, or he's gonna be fined two hundred dollars a day. And when we went out there last week, that fence was four feet and a half.
The key is.
I mean, he did it, but yes, this whole thing has taken me three years to resolve, from beginning to end.
Ten year key, what's starting to happen, and this is my opinion, is what's starting to happen is because people know that you are willing to do things like that, they're now using neighborly issues, I don't like my neighbor, and they're bringing it to the city when there's not really much.
We just say no, like, we can't do nothing about the chickens, they in his yard? End of conversation, every time they call, are they in his yard? Are they in your yard? Are they messing with your stuff? If they not in your yard, there's nothing you can do.
If the neighbor walks back and says, chickens are in my yard, you say, okay, we'll send somebody up there. Well, they left, there's nothing I can do about it.
But if they're not currently in your yard, there's nothing we can do about that.
And that's what I'm leading to. If, if we go, say, we sent us over there to do what?
Pick up the chickens.
To see if the chickens is on somebody's, what are we gonna do? We gonna take the time of day to run chickens down?
No, we're not. I mean, personally, pay, some people pay, watch, some people have to chase chickens.
On the pig thing, is it more than, it's supposed to be fifty feet away from property line? So was the, was the pig, whether it's a pig or a pig, whatever you wanna call it, was it closer than fifty feet from property line? Probably was, because of how, if they were smelling it.
I think it was, that's one of the reasons that they moved.
Yeah.
And her other neighbor said, we don't have an issue with it, just move it, so now it is fifty feet from them.
I was gonna say, because that was, I mean, without adding anything to the ordinance, that was an issue, that was against the ordinance anyway. That they were closer than fifty feet from the, to the property. Because you don't have each side. You take fifty feet off of each side of your property, you gotta put it in the middle way.
Alright, move on.
Alright, so we're, we're killed out?
Yeah, we're. I think it's, I think it's saying what it needs to.
Kill it?
I think we need to look for, I do think we ought to look for ways of enforcement.
Of what?
Of anything related to chickens.
We just don't have to stab.
It's a dog.
I mean, we do, I would think, some of the chickens, that's the one thing I have not been able to solve.
But just the ones on Main Street, right?
Because you can't, he's claiming they're not his. If they're claiming it's not his, it's not like, it's not like it's a cow. So somebody gets a cow going down the road, you could, that cow's got.
A tag.
Tag, or it's branded, most of the time. You can say, oh, that's your brand, that's your cow, and now you're getting charged with it. Chickens.
They're, they're. But they're not always getting charged with it, because I've seen people get away with that if, like, let's just say, like, they hit a tree, and the, the tree fell on the fence. Um, most judges are gonna say that that was an act of violence.
It's different, but you can still pin that animal, you can't pin these chickens, yeah. He's, he might, he could say they're David, David could say they're his. They could say they're Natalie's, they could say, you know, yeah.
A game chicken roosted at the top of a hundred-foot tree, or a sixty-foot, eighty-foot tree, so that's, that's.
Especially like Indian chicken, that's what they are.
Only thing I can say is, don't. Alright, Google.
Moving on, we have a non, right? Okay. Alright, resolution twenty-four dash zero six. Resolution, the town council, the town of Watson, state of Florida, taking action on referral from the town code enforcement board with respect to property designated as two thirty-five East Main Street owned and occupied by Aunt Vanessa Kikensy. So again, just to reiterate, last week, we had the vote with Vice Mayor Phillips dissenting regarding the fact that we were going to give Ms. Kikensy ninety days to abate the violation for living in this, uh, travel trailer, you know, what do you call it? Or the, or she could appeal to the board for the ninety days, so this is, now I'm writing the resolution for her.
Have you heard from her? Now, I just have a question. If, if in the, the last conversation we were just having, where the code enforcement made a decision and so-and-so was allowed to keep their pig, if the code enforcement made a decision here, why did we override it?
Because it's against the land development regulations.
I think that's sending some confusion to the, the code enforcement board.
They will confuse, there's no doubt about that. They're a little confused about what they could and could not do. I, I think ultimately, and I mean, of course, Councilor already sits on the board, so we don't speak for him, but I think they just really got caught up in the fact that we let this go for seventeen years. That was the problem.
There's a lot of personal feelings from everybody else on there, and a lot of them that said, if the council wants, doesn't like it if they let it get away for seventeen years, then they can deal with it.
You're not sure, but they made a decision.
They told her that, they didn't find a problem with it. The council wanted to make a decision because they let it go on for seventeen years, the council can deal with it.
So they asked the board?
Yes.
But this is the question, how, how does the code enforcement and the town work together? Is the town, was to back whatever the code enforcement comes up with? And the town, ultimately, the town have to back what the code enforcement issues?
Mike and I had this conversation. I mean, really, the board's decision was strictly to make a decision as to what she could do to remedy it. It wasn't, the board's not supposed to go in there and dispute what the violation is. They're really not supposed to go in there and say, you know, I've said this is the violation, and they go, well, no, it's not. That's really not the point of the board. They're supposed to say, yes, that is a violation, we're gonna give you another thirty days to fix it, or you're gonna get fined the two hundred dollars a day. That's really all this, I mean, you don't, they're not supposed to be able to fight against what the code enforcement officer is saying. It was, having sat through that multiple times, I mean, it really came down to the fact that there are three people on that board that literally live right by her. I mean, literally. One of them's a neighbor, I mean, there was, there was so much personal feeling in it, and literally, one of the people on board said, if I knew that this was what I was gonna have to do on this board, I wouldn't agree to it. And we kept saying, you can't make this decision based on personal relationship.
And I've also been told that she has not moved into that new, uh, travel trailer.
Yeah, they, they said they had in last meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there.
She told us in the code enforcement meeting that she moved into it.
You know, this is just a bad, bad situation. We've got a person here with a limited amount of finances. She has, is, everybody likes her. I mean, she's a.
What's that for an amount?
And I think, and, and like I said, she has been, she's been right here as long as I can remember. And Tony's, Tony's situation is, is, when she had that fire, it caused, you know, I mean, they give her, I was gonna do it, it took place about, I don't even think of it, anyhow. They did give her an exception on that, and it was too, anytime you do it, it's for a short period of time. And the old woman saying goes, don't lose the squeaker, it's not squeaking, or what, how does that sound? You know, it's, and that's exactly what it's taking place.
She has just sit there and just been on, one day later, thanks, one day later, a week, and then the next thing, you know, it's a month, and now it's a year. And then finally, going behind, we get somebody comes up, makes a, who, complaint about it. Now we gotta do something about it, because.
We can't permit the new building that she.
They didn't get one.
They didn't get one.
They did it without a permit.
Did without.
You can build without a permit?
No.
That, that structure has got to come down, period, any second.
My problem is, is that everybody in here knows somebody in a similar situation, or has been in a similar situation. And they can't really say anything about it, cause they haven't been fixed on, or told on. So, what, who, who is anybody else to say, oh, you get to be homeless and you don't?
But, you cannot use that as an excuse. So if you did that, then we're going to, to chaos. But Elijah, to what you just said there, is, is, is right. You cannot build that like that. The problem with that is, the ones that build it, and again, we're talking about personal friends here now, they knew they had to get a permit. It's not that they didn't know, they just did.
And part of the reason there was no permit pull is because you cannot get a permit for what they pull, because there's no structure to that.
So anything that I understand is in reference to her RV, I'm not even speaking on the poll board, because that, that can't even be discussed, because she didn't put a permit.
Well, she couldn't have pulled the permit even if she wanted to, because the poll board has.
No, because she didn't have, uh.
No permit.
Yeah.
And I think the issue came in with the person that complained, is because there wasn't an issue with the old RV, it was that a new RV was moved in. And they feel like that was a violation of the grandfathered in, because you just spent average money on a new RV when you should have.
Okay, what do we need to?
Go on the seat.
All right, pleasure of the council on resolution number twenty-four dash oh six.
Wait, what's the question?
We have to vote on this resolution?
This is the second vote, we don't want this.
Yeah, this, this is the, what, pretty much, we had to have actual resolution. Last time we just voted, there was a.
Two, five.
Yeah.
Well, this resolution does, is its reflection of the votes you touched in the last meeting. Action like that generally is important in a resolution, so all I did was try to articulate exactly what you had done to justify understanding at the last meeting. Now, if you revoke that, well, then undo it, but the purpose of the resolution was strictly to reflect what you had already done, so that's clarified.
So we don't have to vote for that?
No, we still, yeah, that's right, we should revoke. We have a second.
Let me. I guess I'm still missing. I vote to revoke resolution number twenty-four dash oh six.
All right, do I hear a second? Motion to dial, scroll back one second.
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty-four dash oh six.
All right, I have a motion to accept twenty-four dash oh six resolution. Do I hear a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
All right.
All those opposed, same. Three, three to one. Franklin, can you hear me? Is he on?
He's saying, yeah. He's saying, yeah.
All right, what's your, what is your, we are going to, are we going, yes, he can vote on this tonight. What is your vote on this resolution?
I don't think he heard and understands, need to make sure we understand what he's voting on.
Yes.
We're just voting on the resolution to.
Is it a member, can I have a poll bar?
To tear down the pole barn, she would not be able to live in the RV any longer, she'd have ninety days to abate that violation. But this don't have anything to do with.
Oh, or they wanna kick out.
Well, it's all a violation. The RV and the pole barn, are both violations.
See, that, that should be separate.
That's gotta, that's gotta come down.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, that's not the issue with the pole barn, of course.
But Miss Sue just said, it's everything, but it should not be both, it should be separate. Cause I'm gonna tell you, I would vote, you know, for the pole barn, I mean, I would vote for the pole barn to come down when I would.
Motion on the floor is to whether you want to pass the resolution, vote yea, if you do not want to pass the resolution, vote nay.
Yes, it's for all of it.
Okay, so we have a three, two, vote yea.
There's no way that we could separate that?
Well, you can't have a pole barn, we got a structure, so she can't have.
It's coming down either way.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
The pole barn has to be connected to a structure, that'll permit.
We gotta have a primary structure that has a pole barn on it.
She's saying, okay, so if she moves the pole barn, does she still have to, can we separate that from the actual movement, the actual?
Cause I agree, the pole barn has to come down either way, she still has to come out of the RV though, no matter what.
Cause that's a, you said.
Against the, you can't live in RV. She has to have a door, but at least an address. Move home, cycle town. Three, two. So three, two, vote.
Three, two.
Okay. All right, next is update on Bronson youth sports. So in your packet, you guys had asked about, um, opening day, which was this past Saturday, sorry, the fourth, uh, thirteenth. Um, the schedule is in there for, um, the spring. Um, in the email that's in your packet, Angela clearly delays the fact that she doesn't wanna continue on with Bronson youth sports. I had a meeting scheduled with Brittany Phelps last Tuesday that she had to res, she had to cancel because she had a family emergency, and then in talking to her, um, she's decided she's not gonna come before the council to make a presentation. Um, she only wants to do that if Angela and David are no longer interested in running Bronson youth sports anymore. She does not wanna stir the pot, I guess is a good way to put it, she doesn't wanna upset anything that they do. So, only if they were interested in jarring out, would she be interested in doing the presentation.
Okay.
So, that's.
So she says their agreement is not a term contract, it's supposed to be a partnership to provide sports for the youth, so it's open ended, is that?
It, it is open ended, so, and I guess that's partly, I'm, I made that mistake. So it's a five-year commitment financially, where they get the ten thou, it's safer, ten eight six four two zero. So, that's why I keep saying the end of the five years, you know, do you wanna do anything? And she's like, well, it's not really a five-year commitment, it's five years just from a financial perspective. But the, yes, the agreement is open ended, we can end it, I think with thirty days, no, this is, it's over there.
And it's always.
So, we'll just continue on unless anybody wants to do anything to the contrary, but basically, we don't have anybody, anybody else interested at this point, Brittany is the only one that's come forward to me.
Continue with it for right now.
And then last but not least, just just, um, received a letter from, um, the Chieftain Women's Club, asking if we wanted to make an donation to, um, Lion Run Festival. The only reason, I, I mean, obviously, we're not chief one, I understand that, the only reason I put this in here is because they do take the money, the proceeds, if you guys did wanna do something, you know, Haven Hospice, obviously, we don't have hospice here, um, Children's Table, obviously, we all have the Children's Table. Um, they have three different levels of sponsorships, they have a gold, a silver, and grounds. Um, if you do the gold or the silver, you can get a vendor table, and you get a wedding banquet. I guess, I mean, there's nothing.
I don't have any thoughts on this one, whether, we've never done this before. The question, is, is this, is this a view?
It might be, or maybe in the past, like, I got it, I was like, yes, chief one, but when I read the letter, I was like, oh, you know, Children's Table, Hospice, I mean, there are some organizations that, you know, we don't have here, or that obviously help out Bronson, so, I think so, that's why we're, we're good and you're capable.
Well, I mean, thoughts of the council on that?
I think they do, we're gonna donate to these places, you said donate to them directly?
Yeah, I was thinking.
I mean, and though.
Interesting. All right.
That's all right.
Okay. Curse.
Well, the first name is a quote from fence editor, Jim Milton Cemetery. Um, to just put up the fence, they are a company that did the lift station fence, they asked the Ford Land in forty, hundred, they have to remove the existing old fence.
Five hundred forty, Leonard P., is that just one side?
No, that's both sides, that's coming up from, when you go into the cemetery, from the, from that corner up to the, the column, and then from that column.
Just, but it's just across the front.
Across the front, yes.
So what, uh, Leonard Street, is there another fence, can I go there?
No, this is just from where I think, um, Natalie owned the property next to it, just from the property being, property line from, uh, the corner of the cemetery property. And then going on the other side, there's the road right behind, um, shoot. So the road here, so it'll be the front, excluding the opening, so it's like five hundred and forty feet. And that's the American Field Fence.
You can't see half of that anyway, half is covered in trees.
Yeah. And you probably see, it's gonna have to be some clearing too.
Oh, yeah, you got the, how'd you brought the fence up to that, so.
Were you happy with the, they gave it down there?
Yeah. Okay. Four thousand dollars, you make a lot of stupid, that's a lot, that's a lot. Cause that, five hundred foot, five hundred forty foot of that wire only cost you about six hundred bucks. Two rolls of American wire, that's about six hundred bucks.
All right, that's pretty good, council.
I mean, if you feel like it's too much? I, I don't know, like I said, I don't know enough about fences, no.
I don't see the, where it would be, the point in fencing just the one side, if you were, you know, just front. I can see if everybody could see the front, it would run down real bad, I mean, I'm not saying it's not run down, but you can't see half of the front anyway, except for, what, twenty foot on each side of the entryway? Except for, except for when you're on the inside of the cemetery.
Well, you can see from the, from the backyard of my parents' house, you can see that that fence is like.
Yeah.
It's, it's on the ground, it's like non-existent, so there really is no, there is no separating from, like, where their property ends and where the cemetery actually begins, because the fence is, is just, it's on the ground.
It's not done all the way around, it was just one side.
Yeah.
If we have enough people, um, for the beautified Bronson Day, can some of us tear off the old fence, or is that too difficult a job?
But the only thing that's gonna be.
Yeah, I, I, I went out there, uh, Friday, and I looked, I thought it was more, more rough than it that I thought it was, it's not, it's not nearly as much fun as I thought it would, because it's a, it's a move, somebody to another land on the, between, they had others in the cemetery, and where they, I took the school board, somebody, it's, it's a strip in between there. You, you know, where the, uh, the elderly going out there, and the school board here, out there, behind the elderly going there.
Yeah, that's Natalie, that's Natalie.
Yeah. That, 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 if they, if they don't go, I, I would say, a good, maybe, I didn't listen in a hundred yards. It's not, it's not. It's, it's along that way, uh, it, it ends up with the fence, it has that, with the old, that here, where, where the counseling's up there. The fence is right there by where they buried it, I, I do hope there, maybe ten feet, maybe. I, I thought it, the other fence there, that go down the level street, but it don't go down that far. And it don't go all the way to St. John Baptist Church, on the other end, it goes to our, other, uh, village, village, uh, out.
That little road is right through there. I bet you from there, going all the way back to the school property, you know, excluding the opening, it's like five hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
How much would this cost in chain link?
A lot more than that. You got concrete, those poles and ground and all that stuff.
I mean, is it, you know, there's other options, you know, if you're trying to, to make the front look presentable, or, you know.
I'm just thinking about how many times you have to replace this fence versus a chain link fence.
You don't have to replace any of the fences unless you clear a nice strip, where it could be limbs falling off, and trees falling off. I know American wire fences that are forty years old, still own cows, I mean, it's just a matter of maintenance.
So, whenever people come in and they pay for something to be buried out there, does that money go into a separate, like, is this money available from money that was taken in from people that have been buried out there?
I think there was like three or four grand in there, right? Yeah, so you take it from the cemetery money, if that's what you guys decide you wanna do.
That would be a two for the community, the cemetery community.
Yeah.
I feel like four thousand dollars for the one side is a lot, that, I mean, why make one side, I feel like the other parts still has, or the other side just.
Here's my thing, if it's, if, look a certain type of way, you do not take care of that cemetery, and the other cemetery's fence, and they packed stuff in it. So, if for no other reason than for appearances, even if it's, even if we do a little bit at a time, we do the front side now, we do another side later, it needs to be fixed, because it's kind of, I don't wanna say fair, but it doesn't, it doesn't look.
So I'm just.
Is it, is the plan to eventually fence everything here, or are we trying to make the front look, you know, eventually, it's great? Which I'm saying, it was just, you know, right now, the entrance area.
I'm saying, we're trying to make the entrance area look nice, we can clean a good little section off, and then come back and do like a little border entryway, at least add a pillar or something, paint it, make it look good.
We bought two section of fence on each side of the column, I mean, the, the whole thing is to fit all in eventually, then, you know.
Is that a cemetery committee decision?
Not the, yeah, probably.
I think that's why I was stumped, what, I mean.
The, the, the council decided, the council's gonna spend the money to the general fund, or it's gonna come to the cemetery.
What happens with that money, I mean, what do you use that money for if it's not to work on the cemetery?
The only thing we spend right now is just on some.
The only thing we spend right now is just on some sites, the day they used to maintain, that's, that's, I don't know, certainly, that they, that's it.
I want you to spend that money, and, you gotta wait for some, we, we have to...
Yeah, you don't have, it's not a high, if, if...
You don't have a maintenance, is what I'm saying, you don't have a handle on maintenance.
That's all, the general...
Like, this is just field fence. Or can they, can't do that?
You got, listen, to, I mean, he's not getting the same people that he could train him, and then, you know...
That, if you want it to look good, if it's fresh and...
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be...
Do all your posts even, you want them all, yeah?
Have them raise some strength.
Yeah, I know, and even with us doing it, I mean...
I can build a fence, but that's the difference.
It's, it's, you know, it's, when the staff is so short, and then, you know, we don't have the time, at any given time, we can, something happen, and then we gone, you gotta go do that, I'm sorry, I mean...
Coming in at long season, not due, I mean...
Yes.
You know, and that, you know, that was a big problem, you know, because the guy, you gotta get the same guys, you know, for us, you get a group of guys, and you try, hey, this, you got this sticking up here, you got this sticking up there, so, be careful, get somebody different today, and so, you're trying to, not a little way to keep, you know, so they have more, so all the more is gonna be approached, because they, they really don't know what's there, and they just go, and they move it, there's more, so, it's not their fault, it's just that you don't have the same guys that they can train, and get a mud under your belt, so they know what to do.
The tearing out of the old fences, I mean, that's easy to handle, we can, we can track it down, or the gravel, and pop it all up, boom, dump trailer, or...
Well, that's, even, that is the water line that runs from inside, you got a couple speakers, that's up, so, you, you know...
Yeah, we're all that.
Someone needs to guess?
Uh, maybe, yeah, um...
I think you need...
We'll say, we'll say, if we really let the committee come up, or if I do, what they want to do, talking about cemetery, is, or the cemetery committee to vote on what they can, if they want to spend money, or if you come to the town, the town, to do it.
Well, then, you can, let's see, if they're, want the entryway to look better, we could do something just the entryway, if they're wanting to fence the whole thing, I mean...
Well, I agree with Tyler on one thing, I mean, you could go in there, like you said, just build the entrance way, with some boards, you know, and then paint the horns up, that looks good.
That's the guy I was saying, ultimately, I'm trying to fence the whole thing.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, so...
And the boards, you know, rock chain link is like a rock.
You're talking about some serious money, when you talk about chain link, right, all that.
But they're, but they're not, they're not talking about doing it all at one time, if that's the situation, they're saying to start off with the front, and then work our way back, if that's their plan, but we don't even know their plan, so, we need to, we need to know what, what topic it is they want.
We need to...
I was gonna say, if, if that, if we could split it, we could pay for so much of it and then take...
My thing with the chain link is...
You could, the amount of money that they have available, for the sponsors, or something.
All right.
Um, that's anything, we have a leak, and we, we're just, it's under the road, I'm saying, road twenty-four, where Maureen, we're going out of there, up to town, right there, just twenty-five-two, uh, the address is two hundred, Thrashford. There's a leak under the road, I talked with Stacy from DOT, I'm meeting with him in the morning, we had to pull a permit, other problem is that, we don't know if it is a whole, complete sleeve, when I say sleeve, you know, we have a, a pipe, and they run these, the water line through the pipe under the road, so we don't know if it's one complete sleeve, would we do it, if it is, then it's not leaking under the road?
Yeah.
But if it's a joint, you know, then the water's gonna continue.
Wash out the...
Or something, or something for it. Uh, but we discovered, though, that it's been leaking for a while, and the pressure just finally filled up, and it's leaking under the sidewalk, so, uh, there's something we can fix, but we just gotta get, we get it from...
So, where, where is it?
Under the road.
No, 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 you, you're not...
Right past, right past the apartments, we seen where the cones are on the left, right, right before you get to the cemetery, the one on twenty-four?
From the, from the light, cutting it.
Yeah, come from the light, you'll see the little cones on the left and right side of the road, right there.
Before you get to the cemetery?
Yes, after the apartments, before you get to the cemetery.
I, I think that was a part of the big truck.
Uh, no, they, we had a leak, sixteen, and, um, what they picked up, they, this is the road, this is the sidewalk side, probably about four feet into the, would be the west by the lane, where they finished...
I was there when he was doing it, and it, it is about three or four feet inside.
And when we was digging, you know, we was putting weeds out, um, or putting stuff out, you know, the spiny end of the weeds, so that it, you know, spread more tonne there.
It's, it's a simple piece, as long as that conduit, or that pipe, that sleeve, is all the way...
The biggest problem is you gotta get a permit from this thing, um, but the way they did it, um, can't really just go dig up, it's got about three nineties in it, and it, it's, we scared to take the dirt off, because we don't want to pop up too many actions, get the permit, get everything that we want to fix it, so if something happened, we can fix it.
Twenty-four ain't shut down.
Right, uh, because he told me that, and I said, you know, they got five foot easier than that, possibly, if, when we go and look and see where, where we gonna be working, the cemetery may be, have to close it down, um, so nobody, yeah.
Worst case scenario, there's a jack and pole.
Well, we don't have to do that, we, we gonna use the same sleeve, it's just pulling the pipe out.
The same piece, sleeve, fine, if you get through it?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it, but just gotta get permission from the end, from the end.
Yeah.
Up there on Stevens Street, last Thursday, um, you know, Stevens Street, the one of the lift stations, it's the master lift station, where everybody within the city comes through that lift station, and normally, you know, when the pumps are running along with the clock, so, um, we were pulling, uh, pump one, and in the process of pulling it up, it came apart, the bolts were loose, and the pipe was based on, it was a, kind of a bad idea, um, so, the pump that's coming, is a pump that you all approved originally, it just had taken so long for it to get here, so, you got maybe three and a half weeks before we get here, so what we did, we set up, is we wanted a pump, so, if the other pump quits working, we can still move the flow from the lift station to the sewer. Um, just don't like not getting stationed, not getting water, it's quite pricey, but, in alternative, you know, having that ready to go, having already set up, if the other pump goes out, that we won't give them model steel, and, and when it's turning, it'll go down, so, soon as it arrives, but, this is a, I'm gonna get the sewer, we've been talking about, it's part of the budget, because we got probably four different types of pumps, and no backups, um, like, this, just the pump on Stevens Street, Harley Street, Prime Street Lift Station, we wouldn't need the same pump, so, the possibility, we got six pumps, no spare, um, same thing with Picknick Street, in the, in the one that's in the park, just a van, they are different pumps, um, we have single phase, we have three phase pumps, um, and I think, you know, just the designs of what was needed in the area that they put the lift station, you know, so, right now, we put a fifteen thousand dollar pump, didn't need to go somewhere like a park, so we put, you know, a smaller lift station, smaller pump, so, that's why you have a different variety of pumps in the lift station, you know, it's kind of, you know, neither is either.
All right, thank you, sir.
Oh, one other, I mean, uh, I probably get some calls, I was talking with, with, talking with Mary, um, over at the high school, we replaced the, um, four inch meter, um, quite intriguing, they have a leak in the school somewhere, um...
It's called Sheena.
And, and, you know, they wasn't paying for the water, because, the reason to change that meter, because you have two dollars, you have the high side, you have the low side, or the three-quarter side, once we have hooked up, the dial never stop turning. So I called, we said, today, we went over there, shut the water off, so we just gonna try to get enough people, try to find out where the leak is, but, moving forward, they feel it's gonna jump, because it's gonna be actually leaking for better.
You telling me ain't gonna get no registration?
Uh, I tell you, do some, uh, water.
All right, Curtis, thank you, sir. Get to jail.
Well, finish your, move right along, I got there, um, still want your visitor court, so, I'm doing a great job chasing people down, and, you know, forgetting to do things, so we're gonna be on that. We got, hopefully, can we sign it, put it in pretty soon, I think it, working through the permanent process right now, we'll push that, um, let's come along, um, there was discussion on what to do with the doors, so that's good, maybe we'll talk, we'll do that, we'll pay what we got, but we gotta get it going. And it's, it's more than Tyler helped, uh, helped us get a couple, uh, folks wild and certified, and we're, it'll burn, or we could get them their hands on a skill strain, so we got two, two firefighters that, uh, will be certified in that now, that we didn't have before, and, we had three firefighters go to the fire college for a volunteer week, get various courses this past weekend, so, um, we're stepping up the training, getting things rolling, so, hopefully, we'll be doing a lot better in the near future, we're just starting to be part-time individual, who lives on Fourth Street, so, R two, E M T certified, so, increasing qualifications to staff, and moving forward, so, I don't think, uh, anything else really going out, and just day-to-day stuff, so, hopefully, you're not hearing a lot of rumbling.
Better not fence me.
We're gonna go, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna get the credit card from Wendy tomorrow, and, uh, go Thursday to Sam's and get the hot dogs and buns and all that, for Thursday night, yep, and we'll, we'll be there, yep, and, well, I probably bring the fire truck down there, there'll be a couple guys there, I don't know, so, so, I'm ready, we're pretty good.
And what did you say, charging, not charging?
Yeah. I can't remember, I don't, we're not, I don't remember, made a real promise, too.
Yeah, I got a quick, quick question, need anybody from public works?
I think so.
Okay.
As long as everything's set up, and Rod's just doing sound, should be fine.
Maybe, maybe get some, maybe get some trash cans down there the day of, yeah, that might be, I'd probably move out and I'd say, get a few trash cans down there.
Okay, now, you told Rob about what he's doing, it's not me, but...
Well, worst case scenario, if Rod's not breaking it down, we'll go break it down the next day.
No, I'm saying, I don't...
He's just doing sound, that's it, so, we're very clear about this this time, he's only doing sound, we're hiring his company to do sound.
Right, what?
So, okay, so last time Rod worked as an employee, over time, we bottled the equipment, and he said everything up for us.
Right.
Well, he basically said that that was a one-time deal, which I understood, so this time, his company is doing sound for us.
Okay.
So, he's working as an employee of his company, not employee of the town, correct?
Right.
Correct, so they're gonna make sure everything's set up during the day, and then Rod's gonna do picture old sound, set up for us, so, okay, same outcome, just different, different way to pay things.
Who's paying?
The city, the city.
Yeah. I think that's all we need, probably versus a couple trash cans, three or four.
I'll be there, you'll be there, you guys can be there, we'll be there, and we should, we should...
Do you have a platform, do you have a platform, do you have a, do you have a? Yeah, do we have one that, I know that belongs to the park, but they have one out there, but not, we can borrow from the school, but I just say to them, we need...
Yeah, we're gonna need supplies for that department?
You can order off Amazon, you can order off Amazon, that's what I did.
Yeah, oh, uh...
You can, you get the whole pack, you just dump the whole thing in there, and it pops.
Throw it from the fire station, maybe roll it on the trailer, and we'll take it down there.
Can you give us chips, water?
Yeah, okay, water, right, the fire station's on, yeah, Sam, we just need hot dogs, buns, and probably like the, party factor mixture, the thing, catch up with mustard.
All right, sounds good.
We need to figure out what we wanna do for, if we wanna ask for donations to the fire department, if we wanna hire people, whatever.
What's that name?
However, we wanna do, if we wanna ask for donations towards the fire department, or if we wanna sell the stuff, or however we wanna do it.
I got messy, oh, I'm, I'm, however you want to accommodate, I'm gonna, so... How much money you don't give that here?
For hot dogs and buns and stuff, uh, that's a hundred bucks, I imagine, Sam's.
And Rod's charging us three hundred, so I might have either three hundred bucks on me.
Yeah, probably have a hundred bucks worth of stuff, and if they have to eat it, whatever, I, I don't care. We can ask for donations towards the fire department, right?
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Warren, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, sir, it's your turn, happy birthday.
The sound is terrible, but if you're looking for me, uh, I will give you the report. The Attorney General finally responded, and told us what the story is with virtual appearances, what the Attorney General basically said, is what everybody's mother said to them at one point or another, why are you nagging me, I already told you, they referred to the Attorney General opinion, which says that if Warren is present in person at the meeting, then the meeting may entertain virtual appearances, remote appearances by, by council people. It's basically, as I understand what they're saying, up to you, to the board itself, to decide whether they will in fact use that method, and that is allow virtual appearances, and if they do allow virtual appearances, the extent to which means whether participation or the vote might be so sweet, where the person has the ability to participate and commit to vote, I think, the extent of that participation is left to the local determination, with the idea that if a person is present virtually and participating, and they occupy the status of a council member, the chances are as likely as that they ought to be allowed to vote, and to act as though they were present. Now, the one thing that exists in the ruling is the ruling covers the situation where the person who's appearing virtually has a, uh, an indisposition of some kind, a disability, something that would reasonably be expected to, to prevent a personal appearance. What they're not dealing with, and what they're saying they won't deal with in the abstract, is to set down a rule for what the extent of that disability or indisposition has to be in order to warrant the non-appearance. I think what they're saying is that that is left to local discretion, but basically, as long as there is, or, virtual appearances are okay, at least if the person has some legitimate reason for not appearing personally, that's what they're telling us to do.
No question. All right, is there, any discussion about this? Thank you.
I, I think it is within the discretion of the local body whether or not to allow it, and if they allow it, under what circumstances, under what conditions, with what parameters, I think that's true. I think until there's legislation on it, or until there's a law that can be reported, that the existing ruling, I think it stays within the province of the local government, how, how to do it. What the Attorney General is saying is that you can do it, it's nothing in the statute that... It's nothing in the statutes that concludes your doing it, as long as there is a war personally present.
So should we have like a written, that's how that goes, so that it's the same way every time?
Say that again, the sound, it becomes very volatile.
So, this council says this is the way we do it. Two councils from now, because we don't have elections, it might be different people, they could change it. Should that be the case, or?
I think what this council should do is, is adopt a resolution, or what, for guidelines, or how this is done and when, so that it's on record, and it isn't an issue that comes up repeatedly. But what I would propose to do is prepare a resolution for your approval, that you could look at for the next meeting, and see if that's the procedure, if that's the position you wanna take, or modify it in some way, but I could give you something that would set the stage for it.
I like it, yeah. Yes, please.
Are you saying that the person who's attending virtually would have to say what the reason was? Is that kinda what you were getting at?
No, I'm saying is if, okay, we as councils say, we're gonna count that person, right? And then let's say the next election, it's, three of us are different.
Right.
Are we gonna change the policy based on what the current council does? Are we gonna have a policy, and that's the way it works, so that everybody understands upfront that if we have to, that it counts or it doesn't, whatever you, you know, whatever we suck. So it's not changing.
Well, I don't think it.
The attorney general said that it's up to you guys, but really the only reason that it's up that, it's allowed is because there's a medical reason.
Right.
So, at the end of the day, regardless if one council, the other council says, no, you can't do it, if the attorney general says, if they're out for medical reasons and they can vote, that like sums it up. So like if you guys went on vacation, you could not vote. If you went somewhere, or you just, whatever reason you can't vote, it's only for medical reasons. Right, either way, it still needs to be in writing.
Right.
That's, that's my only point, it needs to be in writing. So that that's understood, regardless of who is on the council, that this is, this is what we asked for, this is the answer we got, this is what the policy is, so that everybody knows that that's what the policy is. Because I'm telling you, what's gonna happen is, you'll have different people, and the policy is not gonna be the same.
The last thing he said with that is that you're terrorists.
It's up to the council.
It is like a medical.
Yeah, it is, it's the A P C level.
On the, on the paper in here, it says.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, we can get a draft, we can look at it, change what we want, like what we want, whatever.
Alright, you go ahead, Mr. Warren.
He said he would, I think he unmuted that now.
Okay. Alright, uh. Committee reports. I think Curtis and whatever everything that we had on our, if we have anything else to fill up. Uh, I know that the park is looking exceptionally good. We are, we will be approaching, soon we'll be approaching the board tomorrow, requesting them to assist us in transporting the clay with law fields. Uh, she will make that presentation tomorrow at the board meeting. And hopefully we'll have those, how many was it, twenty of them?
Thirty-three. Not just for Bronson.
You know, we, and, and we won't, when that's, when that process starts, I'm gonna try my level best to bring my tractor down there, and Tyler said he'd do the same, we'll help in that process, because that's gonna be kind of overwhelming for y'all. And i- if that works out, you know, so, we just have to see. And with that being said, I want, Mr. Diddy?
We got so many potholes.
Yeah, we start there.
I'm sorry. It's like, we're gonna get you there, you can run up on another one. It's bad.
It's bad.
Thank y'all, thank y'all so much, because I see that you are standing trying to back them, as soon as, it's bad.
Maybe that was what you do, you beat it by rounds today.
Oh.
Still hours.
Oh, but that's bad.
Yeah, we gotta get a load of, um.
Maybe the next one, because cemetery.
Cold hats, we gotta get some more cold hats.
Yeah. But I. I just have to say thank you to everybody, um, for, for all of us working together, and thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Warren, for looking that up. Thank you everybody.
Can you get us a list, you wanna start making a list?
Oh, I can.
I think that would be. I mean, that's the most helpful.
But I'm afraid as soon as I.
We can always put chickens in here.
Yeah.
Cat. So.
Just a couple things, like Jeff said, we did a burn today for two of the guys, get their wildland certification burned off a, field at the high school behind the law field. Which is gonna benefit the F A chapter too, we're gonna expand the land lab into that field that wasn't being used. So thanks for his help on that. We have, uh, started scheduling interviews for fire chief stuff.
Two.
Two, scheduled two, got two more?
I have two.
Okay, so that'll be, hopefully all finalized within the next month, before the mayor. Uh, then. We have a meeting, me, uh, me, Sue, Jeff, Mitch Harold, director of public safety for the county, John Meeks, I think the, Willard, if he shows up, and I think the, um, the union rep for the fire, the E M Ts coming out too, if he has to do any of them. So that's it, I don't care.
Meeting for what?
To move rescue nine, the ambulance from behind the sheriff's station, to move them into the fire station.
Not free of charge?
They're not free of charge, but.
This is, this is just discussion.
And it's not temporary, when they move in, they're there.
Yeah, this, the reason for, this has been an ongoing discussion, it's been going on since the conception of that place, I think. Uh, between myself and the county commissioners, and you're upon, just looking at the possibilities to share the, the. Close to doing business service there. We have looked at it from all perspectives, the role we're at right now is, Jeff and, and the E M Ts have got to come to a, not just the E M Ts, but Harold, Mark has got to come to an agreement. There's only one other place in the county, and that's English, that they do this. Uh, and supposedly it's working real well down there, I don't have, I have not had any fallout from that. I will say this, that in my past month, in my, I had the honor of riding in one of our illustrious machines, two-shands hospital, that y'all know me, how I cut food all the time and everything. About three-quarters of the way up there, I said, hey girls, because it was all female staff working on it. I said, what do y'all think about moving it to the fire station? And when I said that, they like to throw me out the back door. So they were not happy about that at all. I said, why, it's a brand-new facility. And they burnt both ears, all the way till I got the answer.
And then you wish, I mean.
It has to do with privacy, and them conducting business as they see fit, that's the best way I know to describe it. If you put them in that facility out there, then there's other people watching, you know, okay, I.
You know, you're supposed to be doing what you're.
I, it, it.
That's why we're having a meeting, just.
That's why they're having a meeting, okay? So I'm gonna leave that at that. I have opened up this can of worms, and Sue knows about this, the county commissioners knows about this, I have brought them all once and thing, and I just want with them to all know this. I think in the long run, this will benefit us. I know it will benefit the county of Bronson, because utility bills and all that other stuff out there, we will be sharing that. We can also look at bringing in forestry people out there, you know, they do that in the Los Angeles county. If y'all ever notice that, you have forestry E M Ts and fire department in one facility, not all of them. Just on the outside. Uh, there's no need to have a forestry wagon in downtown Jamesville portion, but, uh, anyway, that's just. And, and again, this is just talking stage, y'all. Every, I mean, there might something come up with this discussion, that Jeff and him says, oh, absolutely not, you know, I don't know all that, I don't have all the answers, I'm just, that's just discussion, so. Tyler, he's got a job to do, and I don't want his job.
Me and John, Mitch had that meeting about this fourteen months ago, to, originally, and, you know, there was some stuff we had to do, but now that Mitch has seen some improvement, he was, some of them are interested in talking about it again, so just gonna have the discussion, see where it goes, and. Just while about the union rep, when he asked me if he could come inside, and have a problem with it, when he's representing the E M Ts, so.
Because all the factors, it's got the plates, it's got the.
When he's putting the list of all of the bills together, and, you know, to run the fire department, and.
Not mistaken, with English, they have to do a fifty-fifty split, I think is what their, what their cost is to be down there, is just split all the bills.
Mitch in his head right now, cause that the fire department is costing fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, he got that figure a while back from somebody.
We don't know where.
Oh, we all know where.
Well, we know where.
They told him it'd be fifty thousand dollars if they move in there, so that's why they hesitated till now. Come on, I told them that.
We don't know where that team.
But, um, yeah, that's just a discussion we're gonna have. Just moving homes, fall apart out there, they can't, I think it would be beneficial to have them.
Plus, just when it rains, it's, it's a swamp right there in front of it, like, when we get storms, it's, it's a pretty big-sized lake that forms in front of it.
Not just for them having a new place to stay, but training stuff, that they can help train firefighters on more medical stuff, I mean, it's, opens up a lot of stuff, dual certified's being there, I mean, it just opens up a lot of stuff.
There are more classes than there are negative, I'll tell you.
Just working, it helps the relationships.
No, it's just gonna have to be the people getting along, and. It's gonna have to be the people getting along, like we've done said, you know, walk the wall off part of the bump room, so they have their own privacy, and we'll have to, you know, talk to John about that, say, hey, is this something, county, county maintenance can come do, so it's not costing those monies, since, you know, that's just, that's all stuff we iron out.
I did bring to the table in my discussion with them as we were talking, I said, y'all do know that things have changed out there now.
Yeah, repairing some of the cash damage, that's been.
Right, so we're trying to get that healed, that healing sensation going over, and Jeff and him's got a challenge to do with that entirely. Like I said.
That's on the twenty-second, so maybe, next meeting, I'll have a little update of.
Good, good deal.
I know that it's probably too late for the fire department to do that at this point in the school year, but we'd like to see something in the future, um, to kind of get those kids who are opening up to volunteer, some kind of presentation or something, because they don't, I mean, if, if it's an option, something not at eighteen-year-old, they could be getting into, it should, and, you know, even if we just do it through avid, or we do it through career day, or whatever it is, that we do it through some kind of, um, presentation at school for the older kids to get them interested in becoming, I mean.
I know they're working on the explorer program, again, Bob's been working on the explorer program, trying to get it, that goes through the school, and it's, I don't, I don't know how it used to work, but it's been gone for a while, and I think Bob's been working on, figuring it all out.
We're trying to get back, we're getting the kids out there and look at it, we also have, uh, I can't remember someone's name. He works with, um, a program where they'll pay the kids to do some kind of community education, and we're talking, you know, having them come out, they're actually paying the kids a salary. And they'll come out and just do stuff around the station, and, you know, start, we're working on a layout where they'll be able to, you know, like try a little gear, we'll do a little training with them, so kind of get them drawn into it too. So, we're fully getting lots of different things, we wanna be more visible with the public, and get them involved in the station.
Okay.
A little bit more, and the school's an excellent place, I mean, we used to do stuff out there all the time in the past, and we just, dropped aside, so hopefully we'll be working on that, because we, we can use all the help we want, you know, we can get for sure.
Good.
Alright, I think that's about it, I don't have any, Thursday, we have all the stuff, the refreshments and stuff, we love keeping them bridge, I don't know.
Glad you talked, you're doing a fantastic job out there. Alright, uh, Ms. Sheer.
Um, ready, hopefully get a good turnout, because it'll be warmer for transformers. We did send it out again on the school Facebook page, and I'm gonna wait until like Thursday, and then send it out through email that'll reach six or twelve. Um, so, plus with the missing signs, we wanna make sure we get the word out as much as we can, um, for that, because I mean, it doesn't do us any good to have these events if we can't get the people to show up to them and see what we're doing. And that's it, oh, I had a part, oh, cameras, did y'all ever look at cameras for the part, where are we at on that?
We gotta go through, me and Sue, we gotta just call Nick, because.
I've talked to Nick, and Nick is, he just, he doesn't think that it's gonna work because of worry about, I told him right now.
That's what I'm saying.
It doesn't take internet, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, it doesn't even need to be involved with Nick.
I, and I, I agree, I agree with that whole, I think you just need to start navigating that system, situation. And just let somebody that's got a little of a.
It's got nothing to do with.
Let that ingenuity get out there and fix you up something.
I don't worry about them.
That's what I'm saying.
I have ring cameras in my house, that's all I have.
The only thing it's gonna involve is putting an app on one of those city iPads.
That's all it's gonna be.
That's the only thing that's gonna be involved.
And you will have more pictures, and you will know what to do.
It doesn't hook to the internet, it doesn't, you put them things on the credit card.
The question is, how do you get from the camera to the iPad? It mounts up the local cell phone house, internet.
No.
No, it mounts up the cell.
It is its own separate cell app, has nothing to do with the town's cell phones, it has nothing to do with anything. I have nine, twelve of them cameras on my phone right now, they're nothing to do with my cell phone plan, and all twelve of them send me pictures every four hours.
It mounts up the local cell phone house, so you don't need.
It's got nothing to do with.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, like I said, I can't, we just keep going round and round and round, I just don't know enough about it.
That's what I'm saying.
He thinks that either we need internet, or we're not gonna get the level of specificity, in the event that somebody does do something.
We got nothing now, so.
We got stuff, just not getting faces or license plates or.
One of these things at the entrance, one of these things.
It works to prevent them from stealing it.
You put it in one of the security boxes, and if they steal it off the.
I mean, they steal our signs, they steal tour signs.
You bolt it to the, you bolt it to the steel pole, and if they steal it, then they work for it.
Plus, it's gonna send that.
Plus, it's gonna send the paycheck, but by the time they can steal it.
If you, uh, and then you put another camera up, and that camera to watch it. I used to, I did this, okay, hey, we had the same problem, we had the same problem. We had a camera going into our property down in Marion County, and it kept breaking in, trespassing. You trespass with a gun today, that's a felony charge. So, we made a charge against a man, he come back, stole the cameras, that's how he was gonna get back at us. So we had a camera set up at the camera, to catch him stealing the cameras, we caught him again.
Somebody steals a camera, they got GPS on them.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna ping and tell them where the camera's at.
And more likely, they got the picture when they tried to steal it.
Yeah, they're gonna bend over to try to get it out of the security box, I'm, hello.
Then go buy one.
I will.
Just go buy it.
That's what we're just trying to.
Go buy.
Ah, I'll get it.
Just go buy it, you know what you're talking about.
Tyler's in charge of that.
Right, you're in charge.
Cause, I mean, we got, they out of school the whole week, so be ready, you know what time it is.
Good thing is the springs are open, so hopefully that.
Ain't that nice?
Late night. All right. Franklin, you got anything?
Yeah, I'm willing about it, I had, I had five percent people calling me, uh, about the summer therapy, that they couldn't make it, so. so we gonna shoot it again, uh, made age, so...
Made age.
Good, made age.
Got it.
Yeah.
That don't interfere with nothing other.
Don't?
I don't think so.
What time?
Call good time.
Anything out there?
We'll do that, please.
Uh, Jim, uh, to make sure we talk about what we need to talk about with the fence and with the, uh, I guess, I guess they say something about the money or whatever, about. And is it possible you can put on the, uh, we own the land that's in front of the fence that's there now, or is it possible for the sale of trees? I guess you would have to find it out, but...
The pine trees.
The sale of trees.
It leaves, and it's more of a mess than it's worth.
You don't have to for every tree.
Yeah, but then you're leaving the stump there, and then it costs more, you got stump dug up out of ground.
That's fine.
Yeah, if you clear it, clear it, what, whole tree of that, they're doing a job right now. They come in there and clear, cut all the trees, their price tripled when they told me it was up in the stump, so I had to dig up. Cause now I ain't got no leverage to get the tree out, I gotta sit there and dig every stump up.
Our answer, uh... We'll have to check in on that, just see what feasibility is of that. You got anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Go ahead there.
Don't forget, there's, the county invited us to a luncheon tomorrow after the county commissioner meeting. If anybody can make it, make sure I, tell you guys about that. And then, um, the meeting that I'm going to on Friday, the North Florida Business Development Council, in the ABC. Um, you guys are all invited to that meeting as well, and there's a luncheon after that as well. It's in Wilston, nine to twelve.
What is, what is going on tomorrow?
Um, Mary Ellen is just...
End of legislation day.
Yeah, she's trying to mend fences between the county and the municipalities. Of all the...
I think they did.
Mary Ellen, our old, our chief.
Oh. I think, I think they did this last year too, this thing, uh, at the end of legislation, but I'm sure they, Desiree had sponsored us one, or something.
Yeah, she did.
With Chuck Connaughton.
I didn't get no invite today.
I didn't either.
Yeah, me, you, and Robert, no.
That was what happened.
Those, those things must've went out to certain people.
No, they had, uh, period, period, and... Yeah, it's not Chuck Connaughton. Or was that, that might have been act of legislative delegation.
Might have been county commission.
That was act of legislative delegation, that might have been what it was.
What time did you say that thing was going on?
Uh, immediately following the county commissioner meeting, so...
Good luck.
The thing. If the sand lines come up in us.
No, y'all won't be there, just Texas.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
It's still there.
Yes, it's, it's an old, it's an old cafeteria, yeah.
So what time does that mean to Tyler?
Nine.
Two o'clock, yes.
Alright, y'all had an opportunity to look at the bills.
I'm gonna pay the bills.
I second.
The property moving, second, we paid the bills, all those papers, certified, staying out.
I have.
Those things, motion carried.